Want to give us an overview?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight for the agenda overview, we have broken it down for the council interest. Then there is a follow-up from your last meeting in December, dealing with the elected school board. Then, under one of the city priorities, life on learning, we have three of our partners here tonight. For the early learning advisory board, we have Angelica Light and Barry Bishop to give you an update. For the newborn universal screening and referral project, we have Suzanne Preier and Hika, excuse me, Hika Nix, I think I got that right. And then lastly, for an update for the United for Children, we have Carol McCormick to provide us with what I believe is... And, Mayor, before I turn it back over to you, I have Lori Crouch for a very brief announcement.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm really excited about a new marketing campaign that is literally going to be hitting the streets here very quickly. We have five new waste management trash trucks that will be hitting the street within a little, soon. This is a quick rundown of what the trucks are, but just real quickly, they are going to be equipped with GPS, so as the rest of the trash trucks that we have in our fleet, they'll have improved mobility, so they'll be able to get in and out of some of the tight corners that we have in Norfolk streets. And they are going to exceed the 2010 California emissions, so literally, these five trucks will be green machines. They'll also be enclosed, so that we won't have trash flying down the street. We have developed an anti-littering campaign. Part of what happens with these trucks is we got to wrap these trucks with whatever message we wanted for five years. And we decided that anti-littering was really important for the city of Norfolk. It also mirrors a nationwide campaign created by Keep America Beautiful. So, soon, you will see these trucks. We have five unique messages on the side of these trucks. And basically, it's just a fun way to get people's attention to say, breaking up on Valentine's Day? Well, littering is wrong, too. Double-dipping at a party? Littering is wrong, too. Sugar at bedtime? Littering is wrong, too. Sending Mother's Day flowers? C.O.D.? Littering is wrong, too. And then, no ifs, ands, or buts. Cigarettes are litter, too. And then, we'll also have our safety message on the back of the trucks. But these trucks will be in our Norfolk neighborhoods very soon, with a very important message to remind folks to pick up their trash, and then a fun way in which we're going to share that message.
Great. Thank you, Lori. Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
That's it, Mayor.
Great. Anybody want to comment on the waste management trucks? No? Okay. We're going to do council interest, and maybe I'm going to start down there with you. And we'll work this way, okay?
As Mayor, stated Team Norfolk and Neighbor, I think that on December 20th, when we went out to free for the city of Norfolk, I thank my colleagues on the city council, employees of the city of Norfolk. All of you could have been there, gathered at Richard Bowling Elementary. Also, a special thank you to Chief Goldsmith and Rogers and it was wonderful. Rogers and I had an opportunity to sit down in Neighbor's dining room table, just to do a couple of things. And they were very surprised to see Goldsmith, and I explained to them that is what he does as part of the city of Norfolk. Thank you again.
And I think we even have a picture of Andy with a mop from the feeding.
Oh, yeah. Angela, thank you. A special thank you to Andy, who often had on gloves at our December 20th event, and he, that was part of what his... So, thank you, Andy, and he had a great time.
We had a great time. Well, I can just know is that when I had my first food handlers card, there was no, there were no gloves. So, that was a whole other experience for me. It was great. You did, you did a great job.
Your daughters came out as well.
You did a terrific job.
Great.
I have three things. The first one is, Marcus, two years ago, when we were kind of really facing our budget crunch, there used to be a truancy center that was at the workforce development center at Ward's Corner. And what happened is that any time a student that was roaming the streets during school hours, the police would pick them up and then take them to that center in which a parent or somebody had to come and pick up the student. When that budget got eliminated, they put it back where the police officers actually have to take the students back to the school. And the schools are having issues with that because there's no real parental involvement then, but also, when the police officers drop them off, then basically what they do is they walk right back out the door if they're, you know, skipping. I think it was also better when there was a central location that our officers could take the students, and then there were professionals there that could handle it. Since things are looking a little bit better with our budget, if that's something that could be considered as you're going through the process, I believe the Commonwealth Attorney's Office also loved that program because it allowed them to have the opportunity to catch a couple juveniles that they needed to talk to as well with that. But it was just, I think it was better for the city that was one location, parents knew where to pick up students, and it also helped the schools and the police officers out with that communication. I'm going to pass you a letter. This is from the Eagle on Alliance, if you can send this down. I, yeah, I just wanted to share with you that, just a little update on our Eagles. The Eagle on Alliance dropped the lawsuit against the various organizations, and the reason for that is because the Eagles have now nested outside of the botanical gardens. Actually, they've moved into Ward Five, and I've visited their nest. They are on private property now, so the federal agencies, the city, nobody can get them. But there's actually been some positive things that have come out of this, including that the airport has a full-time person now that actually is out working and deterring the birds that are on the runway, which was one of the things that Eagle on and I and a few other people have been asking for. And we hope that, obviously, you know, we hope the Eagles never come back and nest on the botanical gardens where they can be harassed, but if that were to happen, we hope that this is a good time for the city to work with the citizens on coming up with some other ways to handle this, so that we don't have the same mess that we had last time with it. But they, they have dropped the lawsuit, obviously with the option to refile if they needed to. There's some legal term for that, right, Andy? So, but anyway, I just wanted to give you that update on it. And then finally, a few members of the Bike Commission have contacted me with some concerns on how Norfolk Police Department handles issues with cyclists. There's a feeling that the police department tends to side more with the cars, and they don't know the law as well as they should. And they've actually burned, they sent a couple of emails, I think today, to actually start working with the police department on, on our statutes when it comes to that, and cleaning that up so that there is some clarity regarding that. I think, Terri, you may know a little bit more about that, because I know you're more involved, but it is an issue, and they've asked for us to start addressing that. I guess if Bernard's office, if you can work with the chief and the city manager and figure out where those concerns are, the commission hopefully can bring them to our attention, and then we can handle it if it's just some changes in our ordinance. I don't know if it needs to go higher than that, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy?
Well, being in a library, I have to, I went online and I did a little bit of research, and it's in English, but it's from a, a high school in Athens, and it's two sentences that seem to cover what we've done here. The first "public libraries" were found in, in ancient Greece in the fourth century B.C. And what these high school students wrote was this, translated in English. Libraries were normally standing next to a temple and consisted mainly of a large storage room for books and a porch on which one might read, or from where one could take a walk in the gardens, or from where works could be recited aloud to an audience. Well, that sentence that these young Greek students wrote exemplifies and manifests here what we've done in Norfolk. But the actual building itself. The public libraries, being beautifully constructed with splendid colonnade facades through which they were ascending stairs, similar to what we have here, so that more than merely entering a library, one ascended into a temple of the wisdom. So, I think that when we look at what's happened here and what the previous councils have done and gotten us to where we are, you guys have done a terrific job. Just, you did a great job, Paul. And it's very important to know where our libraries come from and where we are today, and that it's, and that this edifice really does date back to, and has its original purpose. With that, if I could, I'm going to go next to, I guess, Lori, you used the term wrapping. And I was downstairs in this edifice of wisdom, and I don't know if we have seen this. This is Coach and Athletic Director. It's a periodical here in the library, and I was just looking to find something to read, and it's out of Michigan. And Perfecting MEAC Tournament, all about details. And it talks about Scope and wrapping Scope, and Mr. Thomas, who does a great job, as the commissioner, Dennis Thomas, says. Thomas estimates there are nearly 41,000 fans passed through the doors of Scope Arena during last year's conference tournament. And if I would say that's a success, that is a real success. It says, "The MEAC tournament must impress fans, student athletes, coaches, and administrators, so the conference works with nearly a dozen different groups to make it all possible. That includes the city, arena personnel, media partners, et cetera." And I just want to make sure, this is great for the city, great publicity for the city. It's great publicity for Scope Arena. I don't know if you've seen it, or Lori, if you've seen it, but you may want to somehow get it out to our people, but it's very complimentary of the work that the city has done. So, let's, if, if, I know that we're probably way down the road, because the tournament comes up very soon, but we may want to thank Mr. Thomas for his kind words, because he did a very good job for us. Next, if I could talk a little bit about Meadowbrook Civic League. Marcus, I've received a letter, and I know Barclay may have received the same letter. It deals with the fire station issue. I think that Meadowbrook is a civic league that felt a little bit slighted and a little bit out of the original process when we went through the RFP, and I think they want to be much more proactive than we may be allowing them. So, I'm going to give you this letter. If you could pass it along, they really want to be more proactive, and I would ask that we allow the civic league to be much more proactive. If anything, it'd be a wound healing issue, and so we need to take care of them. They, they have, they've been complimentary of city staff, but there are three questions that they ask that I think they've been put off on, and they really want their input now. They don't want to wait. Also, Meadowbrook has dealt with our traffic engineering. There is an issue with speeds in the neighborhood, and if you could, I'd ask that we get traffic engineering involved. Lori, you may be a little bit more informed on this issue than I am. If you could just follow up and make sure that we get traffic engineering involved on the speeding issue that goes through the neighborhood. I got a separate letter on that. Next, I know that Paul and I have another constituency, and they are in our next building, which is next week that opens. We really need to take care of the judges and books. They, there's 31 bookcases that are needed, and I think that there's a communication issue. We all communicate differently. And lawyers are very attuned, judges are very attuned to communication, and I think that when staff deals with them, sometimes they feel a little bit put off, and we really need to take care of them. And I, and I say this in the sense that when you're a lawyer or you're a judge, and, and Paul and I live in this world, your desk, your chair, your pen, for some people, a dictaphone, your books, those are, those are our tools. For some people, a computer is. But, you know, you're looking at these judges, and they're asking for bookcases, so there's 31 bookcases that are needed. I have the email. I'm going to pass it to you, and I believe that we, just out of respect for them, we need to take care of that issue. And I, I think that we had talked about this earlier, but we need to make sure that this is, is taken care of. They're on order? Okay. I'll make sure that I communicate, I'll be in court tomorrow, and I'll be a hero, and they'll rule my way now. So, I'll communicate that to them, that they are on order, because they were concerned they were not, but I appreciate you letting me know. I'm still going to pass this to you. Okay. It's fine. Listen, man, just get it done, because that's what we do. But thank you, because I know that you've done a great job over there, and, and I appreciate it, Ron. Lastly, one of the constituents that Barclay and I have has sent us a letter. Barclay, you can retire now, because I'm doing all this for you.
About time.
I've got five civic leagues, and I'm proud of it. One of our constituents has sent us a letter about dealings with the city and a particular pipe. He feels that it's the city's responsibility, and perhaps it needs to go to a higher level of examination. And I know him well. He lives in my neighborhood. He's a very upstanding citizen, a local CPA, and his concern is, is that the city's pipe was improperly installed originally. He has a contractor. There's some issues, and I'm going to pass this to you all, so if you could take care of this gentleman, I'd appreciate it.
Anything else?
No, that's it. I, thank you. And again, and I didn't get a chance to tell, Bill Inge was here earlier, and let me tell you what, if you don't know Bill Inge, that guy really knows his stuff. We are very blessed to have Bill here, and his passion for what he does, everyone, don't get me wrong, I'm not taking anything from anyone else, but Bill just has such a passion for the sergeant room, the historical buildings, that we are really blessed to have him in this city to keep on those legacies of architecture and construction. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. You got anything else?
I have like 30 civic leagues. I'll cover them all.
You're welcome.
Marcus, only thing I just want to keep on the front burner is this kind of public-private partnership downtown we're having with trying to create retail for small businesses and promote traffic. And I know you may have told me when you're going to report in on that, but will you remind me?
We have a meeting tomorrow.
And when do you think we'll come to council with?
Voting night today.
The what?
That, that's separate. But my commitment has been that they'll have to keep up with us. So, we have, so we're prepared from the city side, so it's just the private sector.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Riddick?
One of the things that I would hope is that parents can feel comfortable in dropping their children off here at the library on Saturdays or some afternoons in regards to predators, that we have zero tolerance in terms of any encroachment or unpleasant situations that a child could be put in. I would imagine a child 12 years old and old looks should be able to be dropped off on a Saturday to enjoy the library, and I just hope that the library, staff, the police department will exercise zero tolerance when it comes to anything that would be unpleasant for a child. And speaking of something that's unpleasant for a child, I haven't had a chance to call this parent back, but I'll probably do it tomorrow morning, and I'll also put her in touch with the chief. Got a call in my office today that this lady's 10-year-old son was handcuffed by, by our police department. As I say, I don't have the particulars, but unless it was something that was extremely drastic, I think that that's kind of over the top, to handcuff a 10-year-old, especially in light of all the things that's happening nationwide. We're trying to get our children to respect and embrace our police officers, but, you know, this could be something that could make a child very distasteful about our police department. But I'm going to be in touch with the chief in the morning and this parent.
Thank you.
I think we're out of time, so. I have just something very, one of our other surrounding cities is putting in LED lights on all of their, you know, city lights. Are we moving toward that also? For changing? Pardon?
Project Virginia Beach.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was done under construction.
Right.
And for that's...
Certainly, any time we change over, can't we be moving toward that or not?
No. In that case, Virginia Beach has decided, and there's only, I believe, one other area that I know of in Virginia Beach where they actually installed, maintain, own in that actual grid. So, LED fixtures in poles is a requirement that we have to work with Virginia Power on. We actually, though, have, good news is that we've been discussing that with them for about a year, and we believe that they've given us the green light to pilot a project here in Norfolk for some, some of that in this district. So, but it is, Virginia Power regulates what, what bulbs are used, and it's not, you know, it's, it's, it's not as progressive as, as we would like.
Secondly, are we supporting Senator or Delegate Villanueva's proposal for the flooding that we read about in the paper? Are we, is the city supporting that? We are? Thank you.
Yeah, in fact, I don't know if, if, if you saw, but we've been making great strides on all those issues as far as incorporating, I mean, the state is doing what they're doing because of the leadership provided by the manager and the staff and here in the city of Norfolk, and that bill that, that Ron is on the, on the Senate side, it's, is it, it's not Frank, is it? No, is it Linwood, maybe? Yeah, I mean, that have been working really hand in glove with, with Pennington to draft this stuff, so answer is yes.
So, that the money, that part of it would return to...
And just recently, both Senator Kane and Senator Warner, I saw a letter today, they signed to the White House, to the, actually, the Assistant Secretary of the Army, who's, who's, who's in charge of, really, the Army Corps of Engineers for this final study that we will need to move forward into really construction budget in a...
But this was directly talking about bringing the monies back to this area, as you know, from this bill, and I thought it certainly showed warrant at the state level, and so I was hoping that our package included that. Thank you.
Angela?
I only have two things. First of all, I just would like to thank the manager's office in Winter, and the clerk and the staff for helping me get things done over the holiday. When we were out between last meeting and this meeting, they did a real good job, and it makes my list really short. The Bank Street Memorial Baptist Church in Norfolk has a historical marker that was, I don't know if it was knocked over, driven over, or something or another like that. And they've contacted the Historical Society, but they don't seem to be getting any help in terms of getting that memorial established back in its place downtown. And I think they turn 175 or 176 this year, or something like that. So, if we could help them facilitate that process a little bit better, that would be helpful. And I just want to piggyback off of something Mr. Riddick said, and I think the library has this policy in place, but in terms of dropping children off, we also want to make sure parents know that the library is not a babysitting service for children, so we need to make sure that parents are dropping off children at an appropriate age, so that our staff members don't end up being babysitters. That's it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
I just, I have a question for Ron. Ron, you said that Dominion Power will pilot the LED lights here in Norfolk? They're going to pilot it for...
They've given us initial indication that they would like to pilot something. Part of, and part, what part of that pilot is supposed to do is to determine what fixture would be appropriate for Virginia Power to adopt as a bulb that they would accept and partner with localities. So, that, that's part of it. So, when we were working on the Granby lighting project, that's where it first started discussion, and they'd like to see where they could test it. And just, again, the caveat about the Virginia Beach is that was a construction project, so everything was going in there, and they decided they're, they're going to own that, much like they do the boardwalk. It's a simple...
So, did they do the lights, or did Virginia...
They did it as part of a construction project.
The lights? Interesting. Have we ever done that?
We put lights in as part of a construction project, just like we're doing for the main or downtown, you know, transit center or the Campustella School that's under construction, but we've never owned and maintained our own. That would, that would be a new frontier, to actually be responsible for the upkeep of those lights.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The next agenda item is more council discussion about the elected school board. Bernard, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if the council's going to take a formal position, which we should, in order for the General Assembly to, to take action, we should advertise something for a public hearing at our next meeting. That, am I too late, or is that right?
No, no, that...
I mean, the next meeting is the 27th. Right.
That there are methods the council could elect without further General Assembly action, so that a method by ward to duplicate the method of election of the council, or at-large, is permitted without any further General Assembly action, or a combination of the two that includes all of the other elements of the statute, like having any wards co-terminus with existing council wards, and elections simultaneous with the council members, so that there are some methods that can be done without further General Assembly action. If the council elects a method that's not permitted under the statute, then that special legislation would be needed in this session, and Mr. Pennington has been working with our delegation so that we can submit it, that it's a short session, so the sooner we get it there, the, the better our prospects would be, if that's what we're going to do.
Well, help me with this, because I'm still a little confused, okay? If the council decides, for instance, to have an at-large system, just for, do we need to go to the General Assembly?
No.
Okay. If we decide to do the ward system, which is, you know, that, that we would have one, you know, school board member, member elected from, the same way each city council member is elected, do we need to go to the General Assembly? If we want to do a hybrid of those, do we have to go to the General Assembly?
If it does not meet the other criteria in the statute, the two biggest being co-terminate, coincident boundaries, and simultaneous elections.
Okay, I have a question for you. There's a lot circulating now on some blogs, local blogs, about the fact that we actually do need General Assembly action on any of them because of changes that we made to the term limits last year, that the General Assembly would actually have to strike that language out, because we would have conflicting language then between our charter and the state code. And so... And so even if we went with a ward or at-large system, although it's allowed, we would still need some type of General Assembly action to strike that language out. And these are just average citizens who found that, that were involved in this process. And I don't know if anybody else got that email.
Average citizens who are.
Yeah.
Right.
Average citizens who are involved. Yes, I know, that's an oxymoron.
Yes, I've seen Vivian Page's blog adopting Max Shapiro's opinion of the law.
Yes.
And it's not accurate.
Okay.
It's appreciated concern and involvement, but you elected to amend a state statute that provided for two-year terms for school board members and to increase it to three. The existence of that statute does not defeat the referendum, and the terms are in effect until 2016, when the initial school board is elected.
Okay.
So prior to the initial school board, you retain appointive powers, and the terms of those people are three years. And that after you choose the method of election, it will be very good housekeeping to eliminate that statute that provides for three-year terms because the statute governing elected school boards makes it four-year. And so that would confuse people who didn't spend much time with it. So that's a housekeeping thing.
Okay.
That will follow whatever you determine to do with the method of electing the popular school board. But those three-year terms and your appointing powers are in effect until 2016.
Okay, just to note, I didn't agree with him. I just said I'd bring it up.
Thank you, no.
When does the, what does the session end? It ends in mid-February.
Right.
Right. So if we're going to take some action that they could take action on, we would have to do it by, I think, the 27th. And maybe that's not exactly the case, but that just seems to me like the best move is to try to do something, even if we just eliminate a couple of the options, or one of the options by the time we get to the 27th. What I'd like to do is get in, be in a position by the 27th, either vote for one system, maybe we just have two options left, and try to come to some agreement somehow on one of the options. See what, and maybe we can talk a little bit about it. Now, I've gone back over my notes over the last discussion that we had. I come back to where I was. I think that we keep it simple, and we have a city council election now that has one member elected completely at large, two elected in, from, you know, the city being basically cut in half, and then five from smaller portions. That's complicated enough. And then, and so I'm left with, if you can keep it simple, by just following either that pattern or going to an at-large system, and I know, I know there are other opinions here, that that seems to be, to me, to be the two most straightforward choices. And then I come back to the issue about diversity. What system can we put in place that will give us, at least ensure us of the most diversity, both racially and from a geographic standpoint? And I am left, again, favoring the ward system that we have. But I know there's a hybrid system which could satisfy some of those issues as well. And then there is the at-large system, which I know a lot of people like. I'm not sure, I heard that from the council, that of either the ward system or the hybrid system, there seemed to be a lot of discussion about that, more than there was about the, you know, having the at-large option on the table. Does anybody want to weigh in on that? I mean, do they want to, if, like, if you had, if the council were going to pick between two systems, and the hybrid system, I'd take it is the one that Tommy has crafted or put on the table. Would we be willing to consider either a ward system plus that, or the hybrid system, or you still want to keep all three on the table?
And I'm, I'll just, somebody help me. I mean.
Well, I spoke at length at the last meeting why I strongly feel that the at-large system is the best way to do it, so I'm not going to reiterate that. I think you all know what I had to say last time. But I, that was the view for the at-large.
Any other?
I just want to say, I know we have to make a decision, but part of our discussion involved the citizen input as far as discussions with the citizen. How do we go about doing that? Making sure that there is enough time provided that we can hear, although we had the two meetings, I don't think that we gave the citizens ample time to weigh in and tell us exactly what they wanted or how we could exactly have dialogue with the citizens. And that's one of the larger parts of what I got out of Ruffner, the meeting at Ruffner, as well as Granby High School, that the citizens really wanted to talk to us and just share some dialogue. And if we're going to do it, how many planned meetings are we going to have with the citizens? When are they going to take place? And hopefully it would be before we have to make this decision because we're rushed again because of deadlines. So I'm really interested.
I'm in no rush to make this decision.
Right.
Believe me. And I'm the, you know, the city attorney tells us that we have all sorts of time if we don't put a hybrid system on the.
Right.
Right, on the table. But if we're going to, if we're going to do that, then we need some form of, we need to take action sooner than later. I am perfectly okay, and I think the last thing we want is to move too quickly. If the council thinks we should have, you know, more town hall meetings or more discussion and maybe another public hearing or something, I'm for all that stuff. I'm just, I didn't want the 27th to go by and then somebody say, well, you guys should have acted sooner.
I just wanted to suggest, you know, in the hybrid model that I've presented, the first election in 2016 shows an elected member by Ward Six and elected by Ward Seven and one elected at-large. Is it possible to submit legislation that allows that to go forward, which is actually pretty much what you said, Paul? And then we can continue the conversations to figure out how the remainder of the other seats will be selected and have that legislation ready. I don't want to delay it. I think the citizens have asked for this, but if it's Councilwoman Johnson's desire to involve the community even more, then that does give us an opportunity, if we can, to at least set up the first election to start planning for that, which kind of follows the ward seats as well as an at-large person, and then allow the four to be determined. Now, if the ultimate decision is to go to a ward, you do create a conflict later on on which ward does not have a representative, if you, since you've used one as an at-large. I cannot support a ward system. I've stated in a letter to you that it's either the hybrid or at-large for me. And, you know, one of my concerns is that in a ward system, there's a possibility that you will never have a minority representation, majority on school board because of how we've divided it up. And that's one of the reasons why I presented the plan in the hybrid way, is because you actually have that opportunity to do that.
You know, and it's interesting what Tommy says. I do believe that in the ward system, it's going to be very difficult to have a minority-majority as it is set up. That being said, it also makes it interesting is that you have, if you have two people who live close together within a single ward and you have qualified, regardless of race, they're qualified, we could end up losing that, it's the flip argument. You could end up losing that second individual who would be very strong and qualified merely because they lost an election, where if you have the hybrid or the election citywide, then they all, everybody, no matter where you live, has that strong opportunity to be vetted, you know, by the city as a whole. So I do see that. But one question I have is, and this basically goes to Paul and Paul, Paul squared, is you all lived the transition, and I think maybe it's the lawyer in me, but you two lived the transition over from at-large to ward. It took a lawsuit, probably, the lawsuit was an extended period of time, months if not years, I'm not sure. But ultimately, when you came to your ward system, how long did it take to come to the boundaries to make that decision? From start of lawsuit, which I'm sure the city was contemplating, and historically, tell me if I'm wrong, because you were on council, Paul, were they already talking about if we lose this, we should divide it up a certain way? Because. Absolutely not. It was, you know, the lawsuit had gone on, the Collins lawsuit had gone on for years. And I know Paul has his own opinion, but this was up in the Fourth Circuit, and one of the judges who had supported the at-large system changed his mind. And then the matter got sent back to us to create the ward system. And the civil rights attorneys were all over this. I mean, they were, the lawyers for the Legal Aid Fund out of Washington were determined to have this ward system put in place, and they were not going to have any at-large portion of it, where there was a discussion with their attorneys about could we elected the mayor at-large, and they didn't want any vestige of the at-large system. Quite honestly, there was a computer in City Hall even way back then that had a program on it where we came up with this 5-2 system, and Joe Leef and I actually sat at a table and moved the boundaries and came up with something that the lawyers, that we presented to Herbert's lawyers, and they went ahead with it. You couldn't.
They accepted it?
They did because, and remember, this is all determined by the law, but.
Right.
Back then, in order to get a safe seat in which the minority community could actually elect a candidate of their choice, you had to have a certain percentage of African-American vote in the ward, which was, you know, typically a 62 or 63 percent of the ward had to be African-American, based on other legal precedents but on voting patterns historically in the city. And so they, you couldn't get three small wards that had those percentages in it. So they went with two small wards and one overlapping large ward to get three wards that were safe. And Paul remembers all of that, and we went to a strict ward system. And, but I will, you know, having lived through that, and I'm going to let Paul talk, I mean, I, like I said earlier, I got elected at-large, and I thought that was a great system, really did. And, but I was one of those guys who was on the inside. I mean, there were large blocks of people who lived in Ocean View and down Little Creek Road, and in Camp Estela and Berkeley, and, I mean, places as good as I thought we were moving. There were people, I came to find out, really did not trust us and really thought that it was, that they were not represented. And despite all of our, you know, and I thought we had a very progressive government with people like Mason Andrews on it and others, the community did not feel like they were well-represented, even though if they agreed on our, you know, our positions. And so, I mean, I learned to appreciate that over time, and then I, of course, ran from the ward system the rest of the time until, you know, eight, nine years ago. But I have a deep appreciation for the ward system that I did not have going into it. And I think anything less than that is, it would be, it may be old-fashioned, but would be a step back in, I mean, in relationships in this city. I mean, I really, I mean, anything less than the ward system, I think we're buying ourselves a lawsuit. And, you know, I just, I mean, the Civil Rights Act, the Voting Rights Act is still there. The preclearance section is gone, but there were people who have memories of what it was like, and Herbert may come back. You know, but I mean, there are still people who feel, especially in the minority community, African-American community, that feel very, very strongly about this. How long did it take you to come up with your system? Not long. I mean, once the court had told us, they put timetables on us. Okay. I mean, it was, you know, it was a matter of a few months by the time people, and then you had submitted to the lawyers from the other side, actually, from the Legal Defense Fund out of Washington. We had to make the proposal, but they had to agree to it before it went to the Justice Department. And then that was another 60 days there because of the preclearance statutes. It was quite a, I mean, it was something. And, but finally, Herbert and his, the other plaintiffs, guys like Wes Swindell and others agreed.
Right.
With this, with the system. And it was, it was a hard fought, that lawsuit went on for, I think, I want to say, Bernard, 10 years?
10 years.
Yeah.
Just about.
Yeah, I mean, up and back, and up and back, and up and back. And it, so it, we didn't get to where we are today lightly, and it's not to be fooled with, in my opinion. I mean, I.
I, you know, I'm strongly in favor of the ward system. I remember the old at-large system, and I remember what it took to be elected. And if you've been watching local government for as long as I have, you'd see that you had to be anointed by the shadow government. Now, a lot of you here probably think that there is no such thing as a shadow government, but there is. If you look at some of your old historical books, they used to call them blue stockings, and those individuals still exist. Now, the first time I ran for city council, it was under the old at-large system, and there were three seats available, and I came in fourth place behind Betty Howell by at least 4,000 votes. Joe Jordan was the first African-American elected to the city council, and if you look back in your history books, you can see that it was, he was selected versus being elected. He was accepted by the power structure on the West Side. After that, I think Father Green was elected to council. Well, right at that point, there was some rumbling about a ward system. So the powers that be decided to try to defuse that by allowing John Foster to be elected. And so they really thought that this would, you know, kind of quiet the courts and relieve Norfolk of having to go to a ward system, but it didn't happen that way. If I'm not mistaken, and I might be mistaken, but I've spoken to a couple of people, if we go back to the ward, if we go to the ward system with the school board, that very well could turn the whole cycle around, and city council could eventually be elected by at-large again. And if that happens, then it would be the same thing if you.
You meant if we went to an at-large school board?
Yes, at-large school board, yeah. And then it could, you know, revert as far as city council is concerned. But what you have to realize if you go to that large system is that some of the individuals who live in some of the more urban parts of Norfolk, whether they be black or white, would not be able to be elected. We had, Norfolk was the first school district in the whole entire United States of America to resegregate its school district. Now, the city, the school board at that time was an appointed school board, and the city council at that time was an at-large city council at that time. You can look at some of your boards and commissions now. A lot of the people we see on our boards and commissions, if it were not for the ward system, they would not be there. You can, you can look at your planning commissions. We had Bill Craig, he was a good planning commissioner. But your school board, unless you were anointed, you wouldn't be there. And I think we have to realize that while we don't hear much rumbling from the shadow government, they're still there, and they would love to have control of the school board, and they would love to go back to the at-large type of election for the city council. And it's, I think, we would be making a dreadful mistake if we did not do the electing of the school board by wards. One of the things I thought about as I was sitting here, I think what we, what would be good if we just dropped the superboards, get a Demar from ODU, get a Demar from Norfolk State, Rudy Wilson. He helped us out some time ago in. from Norfolk State, Rudy Wilson, he helped us out some time ago in terms of trying to draw pure wards. And I think if we drew pure wards, we could have the possibility of a majority school board that represented the way the community, the school district is probably over 65 or 70 percent African-American. If we drew pure wards, and if we got demographers to do this, and it might take a little time, then I think we would be, would be well-served. And that's all I have to say for this moment. I'll come back in a minute.
Paul, when you say, are you talking about for the school board or for the city council?
Yeah, school board, no, school board.
Could it be legal to do that?
If we're concerned, not that we're concerned, but a couple of the comments tonight said that if we went to the ward system, we would not have the opportunity of having a majority African-American, a majority minority, minority school district. And, but if you went to a pure election, and if demographers drew pure wards, then we could have that possibility.
Is that legal to do that?
What is that?
To have a different...
Well...
Different ward lines than you have council lines?
That would be, able to, you could do that through special legislation. Right now, the act permits a combination of one of the two models we've been discussing. And the combination, change from the pure ward or at-large, would also have to comply with coterminous and simultaneous elections. So that what Mr. Riddick is talking about appears to require the type of legislation that we've been discussing, introducing into this session soon, if we're going to do something different.
Finally, you know, we have such a low turnout. It's time to also look at a fall election, you know, especially if we end up with at-large, to get the interest of the community, get some kind of numbers up to really get a true reading. And maybe that's complicating the issue, but...
One thing I'd like to say is that I'm not in favor of going back to the community. We've had two hearings, and I think the decision is our decision. All of us, quite a few of us are talking daily to people and getting calls and emails and texts in regards to how the community feels. And I just think that we need to realize that time is, this is sensitive, and move forward without going back to the public. Dr. Whibley, I was not at the last council meeting, but I did see your remarks about a task force. I don't think we need a task force. It's our decision, and I think we need to realize it's our decision and just go on with it.
There's a couple of things. I do agree with the mayor in terms of one of the things that he talked about, about the confusion of voters. And from educated voters to those with maybe a lesser education, we, I run across people all the time during election season who don't know that they can vote for me. They say, oh, Mr. Riddick is my council member. Or when Anthony was here, Mr. Burford is my council member. I wish I could vote for you. Well, you can. I don't know how to fix that when we do a lot of outreach during campaign season to get people out to vote, to let them know, you know, where they can vote and who they can vote for. And these are just, these are regular people who go to jobs and go to work, and they have families, and they're good people, and on various education levels. Some are very intelligent, and some, you know, are just your average, everyday, run-of-the-mill person. And there are groups of people who pay close attention to what goes on. It's kind of like, in my own situation, when I grew up, and I wanted to register to vote, because that was important in my household. Voting was important. And when I was 18, I left school and walked across to the Jordan Newby Library to register to vote. And there are people who were raised, and voting was not important. It was haphazard. It was, we saw a lot of it in when Barack Obama first ran for president. There were people who were older than me, and I'm 43 years old yesterday, who were just now registering to vote. And, I mean, I don't think that we should complicate things for folks who want to participate in the electoral system. If we, if people don't clearly understand now who they're able to vote for, and what their, who their representatives are, then adding, I think adding a hybrid system, as much as I do like it, I think would add to confusion, and it would possibly take years for people to understand who they're voting for, or who they are capable of voting for in an election. That being said, you know, I would like to think that race doesn't matter. And I can honestly say that there is a segment of my own personal life where race doesn't matter. People are good people, if they're white, they're black, they're Asian, it doesn't really matter to me. But I always say, kind of jokingly, that there's a litmus test to how integrated our lives really are. And that integration, if you have a dinner party, how many people of the opposite race or of a different race are actually on your guest list? How many people come to your house? The other litmus test is weddings and funerals. If you're a black person and you die, how many white people come to your funeral? If you're a white person and you die, how many black people come to your funeral? I mean, those are major events in an individual's life. And so, if people, if your life is not really integrated, then, I don't know, I just, I would like to see fairness across the board when it comes to our schools. Our schools have issues. A lot of our schools have low-income student bodies, and they have some special needs. And everybody's not equal, in terms of, everybody is equal in their, in their ability to learn, but everybody's resources are not equal. And I would like to see the school board have an equal representation across the entire city on its school board, or at least have that ability, whether the person is white or black, pink, green or purple. But I would like to find a way to ensure that we have fairness and representation from across the entire city. If you don't live, if you live in your ward, how often do you really go outside of the area that you live in if you live, work, and play in Norfolk? How often do you do that? How often do, I don't often go to the West Side. It's really not that often. Now, I don't have to go to Old Dominion. I don't go there very often, because my life is not entrenched there. But my life is entrenched on the east side of town and on the south side of town, when we have our Park Place Task Force, but that's once every couple of months. How often do people who live on the West Side come to Military Circle? How often do they go to the West Side of town, over to the farm fresh that's on Berkeley Avenue? How often does that really happen? So I think that in order to ensure fairness, the entire city needs to be represented on the school board. And I think the way to do that is through the ward system. Not necessarily about race, for me personally, but it's just to ensure that there is representation from every part of our city on the school board, to ensure that all of our schools are properly represented. I'm not the generation of race. So it's, and it doesn't mean that I don't understand that racial issues still exist, because they do exist. And anyone who says that race issues don't exist, they're just blind. But they're living in a bubble or something. But I want fairness for our school board, and I think that the ward system is the best way to get it.
The problem is, is it's not about us. It's about the kids at the end of the day. And we're all worried about race and everything else. Rodney Jordan's here. I don't look at him as a black man on school board representing black kids in the city of Norfolk. He is a school board member who looks out for everybody, who contacts him. The race thing is just, you know, and it's a generation thing, and I respect those that came before us. But at some point, it's just about what's best for the kids. Isn't it about what's putting the best person on the school board? I mean, why do we have to continue to have these types of conversations? It's about who is the best person on the school board. We've done that every time we've selected somebody. Now, we're just turning it over to the citizens and asking them to do it. Let them, you know, it just, this is, it's too much to continue to beat this over a race thing. I think, Paul, it needs to be an informal vote right now to find out where everybody is on this, and then we know where we need to move forward. But if not, I mean, the NAACP sent a letter saying they don't support a ward system. That's the NAACP. I don't understand why we're talking about. Most of the people came out and spoke, black and white, said they don't want a ward system.
They don't have the slightest idea, even the NAACP, I question their leadership anyway at this point. They don't have the slightest idea of what the at-large system would do. Certainly, we want, certainly we want the best person to represent our children, and children are, you know, the focal point. But without resources, able to raise campaign funds, have these big campaign war chests, the average person would not be able to be elected. You could have some of the most sincere individuals that want to represent our children, but unless they're able to get enough money to be elected, then they won't have a voice. And I think that one day, you know, maybe, you know, 10, 15 years from now, race, you know, won't have an important issue. Usually, when my son comes along, this young man sitting here in the front row, right here, from Granby High School, when these guys take over, then I think that what you're saying, Tommy, could be true. But right now, it's not realistic for us to think that those things exist. And that's just, that's my opinion. And I think if you just look at things, or just imagine how it would be, when they went to the ward system for city council election, certainly the persons who were on council at that time, Paul as well, protected themselves. You wonder why Ward 3 and 4 are drawing the way they are. That's because John Foster needed to be protected. Joe Green needed to be protected. The five individuals who lived on the West Side needed to be protected. Joe Leef did not run under the ward system, but that seat was protected. And I think it's very naive to think that the powers that be won't take this, and you'll sit, you'll sit there with five powerful whites running the school district, whether they're a combination of the West Side and Ocean View or wherever. But I think you're extremely, and I'm speaking collectively, when I say you'd be extremely naive to think that this would be a straight shot when it comes to the election at-large.
I just have to say quickly, a few things. This is not, school board is not city council. School board is not about sidewalks in a neighborhood. School board is about a neighbor, a school system that is citywide. And to reject that a white person from the West Side cannot work as hard as they can be for any neighborhood in this city is disappointing to me. I would also tell you, Angela, that I have been to many meetings and neighborhoods and schools, in African-American schools, in neighborhoods, because that's what we did on the school board. We worked as a group, not as a section of town or a section of school. And this school system will not thrive until we have seven people that are the best this city can produce, that are interested in our school system, not our neighborhoods, not getting votes from a certain high school. I am disappointed that you think 15 years from now, we might be able to get past this. I can promise you, if we do ward system again, it's going to be a lot longer than 15 years. We can just perpetuate this and perpetuate this. We are old fogies. We grew up with this kind of injustice that you all have lived through. And I have not the history that you have, and I respect where you're coming from. But I feel passionately about the fact that we have a chance to move this city forward and look for the best people that we can elect for our school system as a whole. I really hope that you can put away our, what are we now, baby boomers generation, and approach it as your son Julian would.
You know, I was just sitting here thinking, and I don't know whether this is relevant or not, but Dr. Whibley, you probably realize that you were nominated four times...
I know that.
...by Paul Frehman before you were accepted...
I know that.
...on the, on the school board.
But if I would have elected, been elected, maybe I would have had the shadow government behind me.
Well, that's true.
But you know, Paul, we're talking about 16 years ago.
Right.
And I, I feel that our school board worked as a unit. We had African-American, we had whites, and we made, in general, you know, our byword was "all means all." And it was about all the kids, not a neighborhood, not a school. And if we don't keep pursuing that attitude, I worry about our school board.
You know, I, Terry has appealed to our better angels, and I appreciate that. My experience in this city is that they're better when our groups are diverse. That's all. I mean, race still matters, especially when you have a school system that is 70 percent African-American.
But you know, Paul, we're also making the exception. African-Americans only vote for blacks. I think we are a better community than that.
No, they voted for me, too.
I think we can vote without color.
Well, and don't forget the growing Hispanic population in the school system, too. They need a representative as well, since we're going to...
I don't know that there's any right answer to this. I mean, I'm not, you know, I mean, I could live with a couple of different of these things.
Yeah, but it's much, I will say, I was the one who asked. I think that whenever you make a decision for the future, you can't make a decision for tomorrow without understanding the corporate knowledge of the past. And we're blessed with that corporate knowledge at this table, whether we agree with it or disagree with it. We're blessed to have it, because right or wrong, it allows us, and I'm the one who said, Paul squared, tell us what you think. And that being said, it, the perspective that we receive from that is very important in understanding where we've been and where we're going to go. And I greatly appreciate where Terry's coming from, because it really is, I think, where we all, eight, want to be. And I think some of us are looking at it as we do, from the personal perspectives that we have as elected officials. But, you know, hearing that, you know, from Terry and both Pauls, is important in being able to make a decision for tomorrow. And that's not taking anything from anyone else who said anything, but that knowledge is significant in being able to move forward. I mean, I pick juries. And to tell you, picking a jury as often as I pick them, if I told you that somehow that race did not enter into my mind as I'm selecting a jury, I'd be very disingenuous to you. And that I have to, by the law, I have to examine the applicant or the prospective juror, as I do, and come up with race-neutral reasons under Batson that says why I would or would not, why I have struck somebody from the panel. So, and there are times that you're sitting... So, and, uh, there are times that you're sitting there and you're, and it makes you wonder, but I can tell you this, I have been wrong many a time when I tried to figure race in a case, and many a time, I blew it. So, as much as we try to prognosticate in merely selecting seven or twelve people in a box to lay judgment upon another, then it's, we're in a similar situation here. We're just trying to do the best we can, and in the end, frankly, more times than not, race really doesn't matter at times. Sometimes it probably plays in, in certain cases. I'd, I'd be naive to say it, it didn't, but I think that we needed the history to be able to go forward.
And I mean, I, you know, my, my argument, again, it's not necessarily tied to race, it's tied to just simple equal representation throughout the city. A white person could come out of Ward Three or Ward Four, or my little smidgen of your ward. Um, a black person could come out of Terry's ward, or Barclay's, or even Tommy's, um, that is qualified to run. I just, again, I just wanna make sure that what we have is equal representation of the entire city across the school board. And a ward, to me, is no different than a district, um, just like Senate district, House district. It's a boundary.
Well, my fear is, when it comes to school board, and frankly, is, is that I have got, I've got Granby. I'm blessed with Granby in my district. If somebody runs in that and has Granby as their high school, and Terry, this is what you spoke to, again, the historical perspective of being on the school board that none of us have been on, is, is my focus going to be Granby High School? When those phone calls come in, is my focus going to be on my ward? Or am I gonna say, "Oh, you're calling about something at Mari or Booker T. You need to call somebody else." And that, that, that sometimes is the danger of what happens. I can't tell you how many people I refer to Barclay, uh, as my superward person, but that, that occurs. And so, I, and I don't know if school board, if that's healthy. Right now, I'm, I'm not sure if that's healthy or not. I, I think that if we ask Rodney or Terry, they'd both tell us that it's across the city, it, it's irrelevant, regardless of where the person lives. But am I gonna support the parents at Granby, the PTA at Granby, because they elected me versus, uh, as a whole, what the city, what I would do for the city as a whole, or what I would do for another, let's say, high school? And that's where, a, a rub on that side that I would have to look at.
I think whatever happens with this school board is gonna take them some time to kinda gel together as a complete board, and I think that, um, they're going to have to learn how to work together. I mean, even though all of us, and it, it may be different, um, as a school board than it is as a council, but if somebody calls me and they're not in my ward, per se, I try to help them and, um, make sure that they get to whoever it is that they need to get to in the city. And I think that as a school board, it will, it may take some time for them to come together, because it's a new board, and there are a lot of things that they have to consider, how they're going to operate, what the state statutes call for, um, those kinds of things that is a learning curve all in and of itself. So not only, um, are they dealing with the school issues, but they're also phasing in, you're gonna still have some members of the board who are appointed, and you're gonna have some members of the board who are elected initially. How's that gonna work? You know, how are those people gonna, how, how's that all gonna gel together? And so, um, again, I just wanna make sure that we have equal representation in the city, and that everybody really gets a fair shot at running. And if people elect folks who are not qualified, then they're responsible for going back to the polls and unelecting them. So, I mean, at some point, voters have to have some responsibility in this, um, in this whole process, too.
We're pushing seven o'clock, and, um, what is the council's pleasure? Would you like to have something to vote on, um, as far as when we come back together in two weeks? Are a couple of different ordinances, are there three ordinances, or, um, I, I think it's, and I would hope we could move on so, in some way. Is there, Tommy, you still wanna take a head count, or do you wanna-
I think we should. I mean, that may eliminate one of them, or it may make it more confusing.
Well, I heard Angela say ward.
Mm-hmm.
I heard Terry say at-large. Mr. Riddick has said ward. Barclay?
If we're gonna stay in the May election cycle, whether we have very little interest, say the ward, if we could go to, to decide to move to the fall where we get more people out, because there are other people involved, then I would be leaning towards that large system. I just don't think there are enough, we don't bring enough people to the polls in May.
Where, where are you tonight? Oh, at, with the mayor-
Say where we are now, I'm at the ward system.
Hybrid. Tommy?
Hybrid or at-large?
Hybrid's at-large. Then maybe? Okay, well, it looks like there are one, two, three, there are five people whose first choice is ward, and three whose first choice is, is, are there two whose first choice is hybrid, and one, Terry's at-large, so would it be fair to bring two ordinances next, uh, on the twenty-seventh? One that creates a system that follows our ward system, and one that creates the hybrid system, which I take it what you're in favor of is the one that Tommy has mapped out here. Is that okay? I mean, that's, at least we'll bring some, we'll try to move it down the road. Okay. Okay, we're gonna take a short break, and we will start in about-
What about, um-
Well, wait, 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 wait. You tell me, Mr. Manager. I mean, we're four or five minutes from, from seven. I mean, would you guys wanna, I mean, do you mind coming back, or would you-
They had such a good time here tonight.
Sorry.
Staff commuted, communicated with all the presenters, and they'd be fine with coming back.
Thank you. All right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, can we call over to the central plant and have them to give us some heat?
They're, they're working on it right now.
It is cold in here.
It didn't make the budget.
It's the punch list.
And we're gonna, we'll, we'll start again in like three minutes.